Yay. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We hear you over here.
Lucky you guys.
I'm gonna master this on you.
New computer threw me for a loop and updated and I didn't know any, any of the buttons were.
Gonna turn her down a little bit.
At least two. Can you make me smaller on the screen?
Yes. Keep talking so we can hear you.
Okay. Are you sure? You want me to?
Yeah.
Okay. We still have two minutes, right?
We do.
Okay.
Turn this on the speakers. No, don't speak.
Hello, Nancy. I am good. How are you? Glad you made it back.
I guess that's a smile that you're gonna get.
That, that's better than it was before. Okay, 6:00 PM on the dot. Everybody ready to go?
I'm sure where everybody is, but we're ready to go.
All right, well, we've got a quorum of the board, right? And, and looks like some budget committee attendees, welcome everyone and welcome to those members of the budget committee that have made it in. This is the first of two nights of the initial presentation of our upcoming budget. Just a quick reminder, we do have a lot to get through both tonight and on Thursday, so this really is an opportunity to listen and to ask exploratory or discovery questions so that we can make better decisions in future iterations of reviewing the budget. And since I have issues with phlegm and I am at home, I'm gonna turn it over to both Karen and David to kind of run on site and and, uh, yeah, and, and kind of moderate the meeting from in the room. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, David. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Lady. Sorry you can't be with us, although you are with us, so that, that's good. I think before we turn this over to David, I think probably the best thing to do here, even though I think we all know each other, I think if we just start and go right around the room, introduce ourselves and why we're here. So, David, what do you think?
Oh, all right. I'm David Kinney, the town administrator for the town of Lincolnville.
Haley LaCombe, the finance director.
Steve Hans, one quarter. Karen Lee, vice chair.
Robin Tarantino, select board member.
Glenn Sampson, Budget Committee.
Nancy Lake, Budget Committee.
And John Williams, Budget Committee.
And Lady Dunn, Select Board Member.
Thank you very much. David, the floor is yours.
Ooh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Before we get started, I see everybody grabbing a notebook on their way in. Uh, just a couple of preliminary stuff, the housekeeping, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page, at least when we start. Uh, in, inside your notebook, you should see a budget presentation schedule that lays out what we'll be doing this evening and then on Thursday. As Chair Dunn explained, the idea behind these two nights is to hear it all. Um, the select board won't be making, or anybody won't be making changes at this point. It's to kind of get the overview of the entire picture um, so that people can make informed decisions moving forward. And as we move forward, the ultimate goal is in June at the annual town meeting is for the warrant to have both the select board and the budget committee's recommendations on it. Uh, the process started back at the end of last year with requests going out to various department heads, committee chairs, uh, provider agencies, the gamut of everybody that might want to make a request. Um, there will be changes for sure before we're done. Uh, but this is, this is, you know, how the sausage is made. By all means, if you have questions tonight, uh, ask as we go along. If you have questions as you delve into it further in the next couple of days and weeks and months, by all means, ask. Um, much rather take a shot at getting the answer to you and having it be factual and accurate there than you just kind of making a recommendation or winging it without knowing. Um, couple of other things just want to touch base on. Uh, the budget will always have in the lower left-hand corner of the detailed sheets a date. Uh, the start of each meeting, we'll make sure that we are actually all working from the same draft because it is a draft and it will be changing over time. Uh, ultimately, the select board will be making, after these two nights of presentations, uh, the select board will be revealing this and making uh, changes, additions and deletions uh, between now and the middle or the end of March. And then the select board's recommendations, um, the draft will then say, "Select Board Recommends" with a date. Um, their column that we'll talk about here in a couple of minutes will be completed and this will go back to the budget committee for your deliberations. Uh, we'll explain uh, what's changed from what you've heard tonight and Thursday night. Um, and we'll, if there's any other questions beyond what's changed, we can delve into it in depth if there's somebody more that, that you'd like to talk to. Um, we'll figure out how to get them in and have them explain to you your, your answers to your questions. Um, although I love to start at the beginning of a document, um, I'm gonna start on page three in the lower right-hand corner, which is really about five or six pages in, which is just an explanation of the budget format. Uh, so you'll know what you're looking at when we get into the rest of the pages. All the pages except the after page three, except for the last summary sheet are set up in this format where we'll have the subject, uh, in the upper left-hand corner. The actual, it was spent in fiscal year two, 2024. Uh, the budget for 2025, which is what we're working with now. The next column would be what's expended, what we actually expended through the half year. Um, I will caution everybody that half year doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna spend twice that amount in the full year. Some of our budget items are front-loaded or get spent early in the fiscal year, some get spent late in the fiscal year. But it gives you some idea of where we are, where we currently stand. Uh, the next column is percent expended, that's pretty obvious. What we expended through the half year divided by the budget give you the percent. The remaining columns are the requests, whether they've come from a department head, a committee chair, outside agency. Um, for the upcoming year, FY '26, we'll start July 1 of 2025 and end June 30 of 2026. Uh, percent change is simply the request that's made versus what was approved by the voters for the current year. Next column will be Select Board Recommends, that will typically be blank uh, tonight because the select board hasn't made any recommendations on any of the budget. Select Board Percent Change is just math. Then there'll be a column for the Budget Committee Recommendations. So the Budget Committee, I believe, is scheduled right now to, at the latter part of April, you'll be making your recommendations on the municipal budget. And maybe the first week in May. And then the Budget Committee Percent Change. And then ultimately, the last column is Town Meeting Approval. So that column won't get filled in until after the June Town Meeting. And that's a lot and we can go over that a little more in depth as we actually turn into that. But I just wanted to give you an idea of what the format you'll see tonight and again Thursday and then throughout this budget process. Um, I'm gonna jump back to the start, so it's a good place to begin at the beginning uh, with a little budget message. Lady, can you hear okay there? Just wanna, okay, I got the thumbs up. So this is the first graph, there are certain things that are required of us to put in the budget and the budget message is one of them. Uh, with a very rare exception, um, the budget message is pretty much up to whatever I wish to put in the budget message with a couple of things except at the end that are required by town charter. Um, that will state that the initial budget requests for funding are up nine and a half percent over what was approved by the voters in the current budget year. That's $287,463 new dollars um, that are over what was approved last year. Our non-property tax revenues are currently proposed a decrease of 4.4% for $79,959. Um, it's not to anyone's advantage, particularly not property taxpayers, to have expenses up and property tax, uh, non-properity tax revenue down. Uh, but it's not untypical when we start off this process for that to be the case. And I would anticipate, uh, many changes between now and when this is ultimately presented to town meeting. And one of the things that I have to point out or feel compelled to point out that the municipal budget or what you're gonna hear over the next two nights uh, makes up about 14.3% of your property tax bill. Uh, about 14.2% in the last year was Waldo County tax and the remainder was, uh, education expenses. So, every nickel counts, every penny counts, but um, we're one of the smaller pieces of the whole big puzzle.
David, um, do you expect we'll be getting more taxpayers going forward?
More taxpayers. I do, and we're gonna talk about that on the next page, John, so you hang on just a moment. It's always good when people are ahead of me, they're already ready to journey to home. Um, a couple of things I really wanted to, uh, point out uh, for everybody's knowledge. Um, as I said, every item is important, but there are a couple that are big and big changes. If I don't point them out tonight, other people are gonna point them out as we go through. Uh, the first is that as of mid-April, the town of Rockport, uh, is withdrawing from our regional four-town EMF service. Um, that decision, uh, has some financial consequences for all of us. Um, the initial amount in, that's in the budget is an amount what I consider the worst-case scenario, which is if we just take the town of Rockport's share of the upcoming year's budget for EMS and divide it up amongst the three towns. Uh, I don't foresee that to be what we'll actually, where we'll end up being. Um, the three remaining communities, Camden, Hope and Lincolnville, are having conversations with our current EMS provider um, about, uh, ways we can alter the service and still maintaining a quality service, but, um, having other opportunities for cost savings. So, hopefully by the time this, uh, ends up in the Budget Committee's lap for their recommendations, uh, we'll be able to report on good or better news than where we currently are. Uh, the Select Board is also in the process of um, contemplating the hiring of a consultant to assist, assist the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee in its work. Um, we have advertised and sought proposals for that. Um, we're not to the point where we're hiring somebody yet, or you, if the decision to hire has even been made. Um, we've put a placeholder in the budget uh, that's adequate to cover any of the consultants that put in the proposal. Um, right now, we are looking for, um, we have two select people, myself and one member of the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee are a substitute, going to make a recommendation uh, to the full board on who that consultant would be or if they can, if a consultant will be used. And I would anticipate that that placeholder amount will also change between now and when this gets to um, the Budget Committee. I'd hope to be a little further along on that. We did have a request for an extension of time to submit proposals that was, uh, given. So we're a couple of weeks behind in that process. Um, we have a capital improvement program budget that we're going to talk about tomorrow night uh, that's proposed for a $60,000 increase due to the work we're proposing to do for capital improvements in the coming year. Uh, one of the other things for members that, um, at least some of us were here last year. Glenn, you're completely new. Nancy, you too? Oh, good. Um, last year or as of January 1st of 2025, um, the state of Maine has a Paid Family and Medical Leave Act which requires, uh, employees, employers to pay in at least one-half to 1% into the program. Um, the program is funded at 1% of wages. Now, or employers can pay the whole thing, the town opted to pay half, which is what the minimum required by employers. And, uh, this year, that was in last year's budget, but was only funded for half the year because the program didn't start till January 1st. But this year we'll be paying for all weeks of the year into that program. And we'll talk about that more as we move forward. Um, this upcoming budget year, uh, we have 53 pay periods versus 52. 52 is in the typical year, but every now and again, we get caught with the 53rd pay period. Uh, the last time was in fiscal year 2020. Uh, so we budgeted and you'll see that throughout the document and I'll make sure to point that out uh, where we've included the 53rd pay period uh, in the budget. The proposed budget, uh, seeks to maintain the current staffing level, we're not looking to increase staff or decrease staff. Um, we have included in the budget a 2.5% adjustment to wages uh, which mirrors the social security, um, caller that was received by social security recipients in January. Um, and we've listed the last 15 years' worth of, uh, adjustments that that has been. Occasionally, there have been times where, um, certain positions have also received a step increase for merit. Uh, there are none of those proposed for this year, I say with great hesitancy. I'm not sure of that. We'll touch base as we go through page by page. Um, and occasionally, there have been adjustments to some of our other stipended positions. Uh, for example, this year, the fire chief has proposed increase for the fire department officers. And we'll talk about that actually later tonight with the fire chief. And thus far, there's no change been included in the budget for the town administrator. Uh, although the selectmen have done his performance evaluation, they have not, uh, voted, put forward any direction, um, in public session for that. So that probably, hopefully will change when the Budget Committee sees this again. And our budget revenues are in a bit of a state of, I guess I'll describe it as flux. A couple of years ago, uh, during COVID, um, the schools received a large, um, amount of money or were able to, um, were allocated a large amount of money that they had to spend seek reimbursement and then, uh, would be reimbursed, uh, federal funds running through the state. Unfortunately, uh, the Lincolnville Central School, uh, is behind on submitting those reimbursement requests, so our audits haven't been completed. As I understand it, the, uh, fiscal year '23 requests have been submitted and now we wait for the auditor to come do their work. As the Lincolnville Central School is a municipal school, uh, their monies come through the town to them. Um, we can't do the town's audit until the school's audit is done. Uh, without the town's audit, some of our, uh, revenues are, we have pretty good estimates or what we think are accurate, but until they're audited, we don't know. So, stay tuned. Um, and for now, on the revenue sharing, we have just included what was estimated by the state treasurer's office, just came out last week uh, for those revenues, um, so stay tuned there as well. Couple of things that are required by charter, um, one is the town's debt position. Uh, the school construction debt will be paid off this calendar year. Somebody put a hooray in that budget message. Um, been a long time coming, 20 years. Uh, the school budget debt is included in the school's budget, so you'll see that on a different night or the Budget Committee will see that on a different night. Uh, the principal that remains left to pay on that's $331,709. And we have one, uh, or will be after July 1, in the new fiscal year, we still owe 660 some odd thousand currently, but that payment will be made in May. Um, and on that remaining debt, we'll owe $1,032.02 in interest uh, when that debt, when we retire that debt in November. So, I can tell you, you can rest assured that, uh, that debt limit or what we have for remaining debt is well beneath the, what's allowed in state law. Um, I don't think there's a person in this room that would like to see the town be anywhere near the state uh, limit for debt. It is a lot of money. I wouldn't be comfortable to that. But anyhow, we'll beat it, beat that away. Uh, John earlier asked about, uh, valuation for new buildings and splits. Um, we, the town, are in the process of doing a town ride revaluation of all properties that I anticipate will be done and completed well in advance of tax commitment, that'll be in August. Um, the current valuation, or the taxable valuation in April 1st, 2024 was $454 million and some change. The state says that in 2025, Lincolnville's worth $842 million and some change. Um, I'm thinking we'll be a lot closer to the state valuation when we're done with the revaluation than we are currently with this one. That being said, um, buildings continue um, with a number of new homes. If we were to remain with the old system uh, valuation, we probably are, are adding somewhere in the magnitude of three or four million dollars worth of that in the year. Uh, but with the new new, new system, it's probably well in excess of that. I don't know if that touches enough of you, John, or not, or keep going. Okay. Oh, we're, but we're already behind. I better talk fast. Uh, we're gonna flip through the page, unless somebody has some questions, through to page four and start with administration and finance. Administration and Finance is basically everybody here in the town office with the exception of the code enforcement officer uh, and the assessor's agent, which is a contracted position. So there are four full-time employees and two part-time employees. We have a part-time administrative assistant and a part-time public facilities director.
So, we asked one question back.
Yeah.
Um, so, when we add new households to the town?
Yeah.
Um, do those new houses, do they actually cost the town money? You don't have to build new roads or uh, fire protection go up like that, or is it just?
Um, I wouldn't say it was exactly free, but I wouldn't say it costs the town money either. Um, it's hard to identify the services that a household or business demands or is entitled to. Um, if you start, if you had a number of households and they had three children each and they were all going to school, it's probably a losing proposition. If you have people that build a new home and come here to retire, it's probably to the town's financial benefit. Um, and so it's very difficult to pinpoint. Um, we're the, the first student in the school is the most expensive because you have to have a school when you have a child in school. The last child in is probably the least expensive because you already have the school, you already have the teachers, you already have the principal, you already have the custodial staff and whatnot. Um, we are unlikely to see enough building boom to require a change in the fire department, use that for an example. Um, I suppose it could be enough industrial development or something special come in that might require a change, but for your, the average home, we're not adding firefighters or fire trucks because somebody builds a new home or we have 10 new homes built in a year. And as I touched on in the, um, in the, in the opening remarks, we're not looking to change any staffing levels, we're not looking to, you know, take somebody that's part-time in the office and make them a full-time position. On the same token, we're not looking to take somebody that's full-time and make them part-time either, so. Status quo continues. So, um, particularly for Glenn and Nancy's benefit, um, under administration and finance, um, the we break that out in some detail, it doesn't get down to every box of paper clips that we purchase, but we certainly have some detail there and I'll just touch on those briefly and, um, our other departments will kind of follow suit. Uh, the first half of the page is a summary, the second half of the page and the next page has a little more detail on each item. And we'll start with wages, just so that we can start at the top. Midway down the page, you can see the various positions that are included in administration and finance. Uh, town administrator, finance director, two full-time administrative assistants, one part-time administrative assistant and one part-time public facilities director. Adjacent to that, you can see the step if there is one. Uh, the town Uh, the town administrator and fine public facilities director. Part-time public facility director do not have a wage and step system. Uh, you can see next to that in twenty-twenty. FY twenty-four, which really should say FY twenty-five, that's the first typo I found. Um, you can see the current wages for those positions, what's been budgeted for. FY twenty-six step, if anybody's entitled to a step change, you notice the difference. Uh, but nobody, there are no steps changes this year. And FY twenty-six shows the amount of compensation proposed for each of those positions in the upcoming budget year. If this were a fifty-two pay week year. Um, administration and finance payroll as currently proposed would be four hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. As I discussed earlier, this is an odd year for us, it has fifty-fifth, fifty-third pay week. So we've taken four oh eight for twenty-two, divided that by fifty-two. Comes out with seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and added that into the fifty-third pay week. Making the total for wages. Uh, for administration and finance, four hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. That went pretty quick, but does everybody understand the kind of logic behind that? All right, good. Uh, FICR and Medicare. Um, that's a required contribution equal to seven point six five percent of eligible wages. And certain benefits. Get paid that, to have that deducted too. Um. Paid family and medical leave, we talked about that, that was new this past year, uh, you can see. That there's an essence of doubling of that. Uh, the doubling is because the last, in the current fiscal year, we only paid it for half the year. In the upcoming fiscal year, it's a, it's for the entire fiscal year. And the reason it's not just solely doubled is because we have the fifty-third pay week and we're offering our employees, or the budget contains. Uh. Two and a half percent um wage increase for certain employees.
The, uh, excuse me, the.
Yeah.
The, the increases in uh, by the Medicare.
Yep.
Is that, that due to increased uh. Hours?
Increased wages and the fifty-third pay week. Good question. Yes, yeah, um, everywhere. Uh, throughout the budget, all positions have been adjusted with the exception of. The town administrator and the certain ones that the fire chief is recommending something different. Have been adjusted by two point five percent throughout the budget. Uh, retirement program, the town generously offers full-time employees a match of up to six and a half percent of their wages for retirement. That's what retirement ICMA is the International County Man, City Managers Association, they manage. The program for us. Uh, medical and dental insurance is offered to full-time uh employees of the town. The town has a split with employees based on when your date of hire was, or if you're a contracted employee. Um, and. If I can explain that much better, I think everybody knows medical and dental. Um, advertising, we advertise various things, job opening, public hearings. Um, election things that are open, open. Um, bid notices, they all show up in the newspaper and we have, we get charged for that. Audit, we'd like to think we're gonna have an audit eventually and we're gonna have to pay for that, we are required by statute to have an in, outside independent auditor review the books. Uh, liens and discharges for people that don't pay their property taxes in a timely fashion. We file liens with the Red, Waldo County Registry of Deeds to preserve our interests. Uh, when those liens are actually, when the taxes are paid, pay the lien cost. As well as the discharge costs that get recorded at the registry, and so we recoup that money, but we don't recoup it here. Uh, postage, pretty straightforward, we pay mail-out property tax bills, tax bill reminders. And other correspondence. Uh, professional development is the various trainings that we allow or send or require people to go to. Uh, to keep current with their uh knowledge, what we're doing. Town membership, the town belongs to a number of association, the main municipal association. The ICMA Retirement Corporation, Midcoast Council of Governments. Uh, Managers Association, Tax Collectors and Treasurers Association, and Town Clerk's Association. And the town owned a piece of property on the Richards Road, which is a private road, and we contribute to the Richard Road Association dues. Prop, give the maintenance of that road. Keep talking unless somebody's gonna ask questions, uh, printing. We print ballots, town reports, tax bills, checks, forms, et cetera, publications. For print media and or electronic subscriptions. Tax maps, we annually update our tax maps and we have an outside company do that for us. Uh, computer purchases, hardware purchases, computer support. Hardware maintenance and software is in a slight bit of flux, um, currently, hang on. Our uh IT person unfortunately passed in the last year. We are in the process of switching to a different company to do our IT support. Um, and so those are a little bit of. Numbers in flux at the moment, may see some change. Uh. We uh skipped over our software licensing. Um, the town operates with a software program called Trio. Uh, which does our tax, taxing, assessing, dog licensing. Car registration, blah, 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 basically anything you do at the counter, we have an annual license fee with those folks, which is astronomical. But can't function without them. Um, records maintenance, we um are required by statute to maintain some of our records in perpetuity. As those records, um, as we fill up the clerk's books and the, and the uh tax commitment books. Those get sent out for um preservation and get bound and keep them in the multi when they come back. Uh, where am I now, talking too quickly, too fast, too much. Copyer lease, we lease our photocaller in the office. We have a copy, we get a certain amount of copies uh built into the lease, we do over that, so we have an overage account. Uh, supplies are for the notebooks you have in front of you and the paper and pens and pencils and. Whatever else, travel, we reimburse employees for. Uh, the town's use of personal vehicles at the IRS rate, if somebody goes to the bank. Or goes to a training, we pay people to use their vehicles. Uh, cellular telephone, the town is generous enough to give me a cellular telephone. If we wanna save six hundred dollars, we can cut that out, I'm more than happy to turn that back in. Usually that gets a little more response than that, but.
Yeah, he tries every year.
Um, ballot, ballot tabulating machine. Um, we rent one of the machines to uh count ballots, we're not, and people are staying up to the wee hours of the night to count ballots. And. I pretty much breathe through administration and finance, I'd gladly answer some questions if you have some.
Uh, just one point.
Yeah.
Uh, on the, the cocker overage.
Yeah.
Is, is the, the baseline fixed? Uh, or is there options to. Increase the, the, the base number of copies still that can be eliminated, cause it's consistent.
Yeah, it was, there was an option available to us when we, when we initiated the lease. Uh, we made a conscious choice to um not lowball it, but be beneath the. The amount we were using or we thought we would use because nothing like paying for something you don't get.
Right.
Um, and we've had a, an overage line every year since. I think when we, uh, when this lease is up and we reevaluate what we're going to do moving forward. We'll look at the copies we actually have been using in the last couple of years and shoot for an average there and then. If we lease again, do that.
You know, when we, the lease is up?
I would say probably about three years, I think this is our second year with this one.
I think we may, I think FY twenty-six maybe a third, but whatever, yeah. Somewhere in that, and I believe, and I believe we did get a five year lease, so. Other questions on administration and finance?
Um, I have one question, computer purchases.
Yeah.
Six thousand, we got computers in here that. Need replacing, is that what that is?
Yes, we have eleven workstations. And we had been on a plan to replace basically two a year. So we, so our oldest would be five, we have slipped from that plan with the illness that our previous IT. Uh, individual had before he passed. Uh, we'll be looking to replace several before the fiscal year ends. And several early in the new fiscal year because a couple of our machines won't support. Uh, Windows eleven that we have to migrate to before October eleventh or some date like that.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, reason for that question is um overage on printing. And this will be the third year I've mentioned. iPads for select board members.
Yep.
So I'm just gonna. Get that out there again.
Um. Fair enough. We'll put it on an agenda.
And just, and I know we're, we have a lot to get to, and a lot of numbers that have changed this year, but um. I think we need to look at it all.
We've made note.
Thank you, David.
You are most welcome, any other questions on administration and finance, and I know I'm going fast.
That's a good question.
Yeah, sure, by the way.
Um, ballot tabulating machine rental, we didn't spend anything in fiscal twenty-four.
We have not been building FY twenty-four.
So they're more than a year behind them, going.
Um, I think we paid when we first got the thing and they, I don't know if they've forgotten that we have it or what. Cause we keep using it, they keep programming it for us, so. I'm on the don't ask, don't tell, people don't send you a bell. But I, but I think we're prudent to keep money in the budget for when they figure out that, you know, hey, we want our machine or we want our money. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, okay, moving to page six, uh, animal control. Uh, towns are required by statute to have an animal control officer. Uh, we have a part-time animal control officer that we. Uh, that actually serves a number of communities in, as, as an animal control officer. Uh, we pay that person an annual stipend. Um, and on that annual stipend, we pay FICR and Medicare, and pay family medical leave. We have a uh reimbursement for her, for her cellphone. And we pay PAWS Animal Shelter. Uh, so we have a place to take uh strays that are picked up by the animal control officer. Uh, we have a supplies and training budget. We have a membership so she can belong to the main animal control association. And a mileage reimbursement at the, again, at the IRS rate should she travel to pick up it.
She didn't wanna come see us, did she?
I think she's away.
Yeah.
If you'd like to see the animal control officer, I'm sure we can have a recommended future meeting.
Be good friend with my city, do I see her way too much?
So we're not on schedule, but we're close. And. All right, joining us now is Chief Bullington from the Lincolnville Fire Department. We're gonna move to page seven and eight. We're getting pretty close to being back on schedule, and. I don't know if you wanna talk about overall program, each individual line or?
We can talk about it to individual line, yeah. Questions, um. Officer stipends were increased this year, um. Due to the fact that the ALS came last year, they gave us aware that there were several wire trainings that needed to be done every year, so. I'm doing more big work, more scheduling. Just. Behind the scenes work, uh, so I increased my stipend and I'm asking more of. Not much more, but a little bit more of Jake and AJ at work. To be chief, assistant chiefs, uh, so I figured we'd add a little bit more to that, because their load is increasing as well. Firefighter wages, I believe, Katelyn, you just went up two point five percent, right?
David did, yeah, sorry, Dave.
We did, we did, the town did. Everybody's been happy with that.
But the benefit of. All, if you remember, or you maybe, maybe you don't know because you weren't here last year. Last year, the town changed its compensation program for our firefighters. We now pay on an hourly basis for both calls and training. Um, we had a lifetime of tremendous bargain and I think it's working.
Works great so far, um, we have, because we're paying now, I don't know if it was a hundred percent of it, we had three. Young people tonight, enjoying the party.
That's good.
I don't know how much it's really helping, but I think it helps a lot to young people, really, our time for homes. In the mid-coast area, yeah, I think we can just offer to supplement. Their incomes so that they can feel comfortable leaving work, responding and. And then. So. I think it's, so far it's been a great investment for the town. And it shows appreciation for everybody does, because there's, there's a need for some other stuff. That everybody's required to do, to be involved, a municipal firefighter. Who, uh, if I could have Medicare. Next adjustment, why, yeah, to fire. Uh, truck fuel, with that six thousand, um, it's kind of one of those things, you just never know how much. Fuel we're gonna use, I think, what training to do and the fire calls, structure fires, like have. We've only used eighteen, about eighteen hundred dollars that this year. That could probably get reduced. If it's needed, I don't. If, if it's an issue of trying to save a little bit of pennies. I don't. It's, those things that's up to you all, you want to, but yeah, um, there's been years where we've gone through it, four thousand dollars. Past, so.
Uh, like you said, you, this is a hard one to project, rather than be.
Just don't, maybe, yes, consistently, last year and this year, we've been right on. So, my assumption is next year it's going to be about the same, if not, or. It's twenty-four, we did have that big storm, which. Was well over a dozen calls just in that one day. So, continuing to climb, I call. See, training. We've kind of used that up this year, uh. Exponentially, with covid and everything, there was not a lot of outside training available. And a lot of the training facilities kind of dissipated. And I found this year that there's been a lot more opportunities to get these folks trained. Uh, by really good training facilities, uh, so we're trying to get them out. As much as I can and as well as doing law or training in-house. So, I think it's necessary to, to increase that. To fifty-five hundred dollars for next year. Building and property maintenance, um, I think there's, there's some additional work that needs to be done on the center station, there's a touch-up. Paint wise, on the siding, I've had some water runoff. In the winter time, that seems to be splashing and hitting that with cement siding. And I think the water is actually dissolving into the cement and freezing. And then it pushes the paint off the cement. And then it pushes the paint off the cement surface, so Matt and I looked at it. Uh, and then he's gonna talk to somebody about putting maybe a gutter. System in so that we can alleviate the working issues and then also touch on whatever. If we need to touch that siding, uh, it's just two small areas that need to be done. Electricity, but just. Butter purchases, um, like everything, the price of everything has dropped, so that's just increasing. Price and lower already buying in.
Electricity, so that's up because, uh.
It's the basic to have the meter on the side of the building. Has gone up and we're gonna see that throughout. I mean, we. You, you know, John, but Glenn and Nancy don't know, we, the town own a solar array that's adjacent to the fire station. Um, it generates a hundred percent of the electricity used by municipal buildings. Um, and but we're still connected to the grid. So we get the basic charge for every meter that we have out there. Uh, and if you're, if you're anything like me, you know that the basic supply and not supply. Transmission and distribution charges went up in January. Um. And our charges went up too. So we've budgeted a little bit more. You're just having to be the first person that has a meter and.
So, so you're paying all the meters?
No, he's paying.
Cause we have two stations, so it's for both of them. Yeah, um, the only other, this is the equipment maintenance, um, there is one thing that I failed to add to Caleb put in here. Um, this year, uh, we need to add an additional seventeen hundred dollars onto the seven thousand. And traditionally, we, we have to have our breathing air bottles that we run our air packs, they have to go out and get tested, they get hy- hydraulically tested with water. And if they expand to, to a certain rate, then they fail, they, they get thrown away or disposed of. Those have to be done every five years. It's come next year is going to be five years from when we bought all our new packs and all our new bottles, so we have to send out thirty bottles. Traditionally, it's just been three every year, so it's just, we just shuffle three through every year and everything's been fine on equipment maintenance. But I completely forgot that we need to do all thirty bottles next.
So that's an additional seventeen hundred to the seven thousand. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
But so, so we won't be sending out a few every year, we're just in a all or nothing every five years.
All or nothing until, until we hit thirty year mark. Um, cause what we're still doing, what, what, what we've always been doing is buying three bottles every year. Uh, and then when we replace the packs, the new packs took different bottles, so we bought packs and bottles. Bought fifteen packs, fifteen bottles from the packs, then fifteen spares. So what we're doing now is we're buying three bottles every year so that at the end of thirty years. All of those will be disposed of and then we'll go back to doing three or four bottles every year. It's just like, you just can't. They should, uh, so we're gonna have a whole lot of bottles. Sixty bottles when it comes to time at thirty years.
So does that go, you skipped over equipment purchases, is that part of that line?
It is not, no, um.
The five bottles is part of equipment purchases, right?
Yeah, yeah, the, the bottles, bottle purchases, yes, are, are part of purchases, um. Air, air pack parts, um, like. All are, are terminated here, we buy at least three sets of turn up gear, that's about. A little over twelve thousand dollars just for the turn up gear for three sets every year. Uh, then of course the prices, prices of a lot of this stuff have gone up a lot because of the P FAS. And then trying to, they're getting rid of P FAS in a lot of this, but, but. But the products they're using in substitution for are a lot worse. So we'll continue doing the pack that. Pack parts and thermal energy cameras. And the turnout gear. Like we have been. And there's other little random things, I mean, there's firefighting tools, there's hoses we buy. Every year as we need it to, to get replaced, there's also hose that fails testing, that also needs to get replaced, so that, that's caused out. Um, truck maintenance, that's the cost of truck maintenance has increased. So that'll go from sixteen thousand by hundred to eighteen thousand. That we all know. The planning, we're hoping for the best, um. And hopefully we don't spend all that money, but um, not having enough, let's just find if we do have an actual issue. Eating fuel and propane. Kayla kind of figured out what she felt that we would need for that.
Can you ask about the truck maintenance, um, so you just have a contract?
Yes, yeah, they, they, they come, they take the truck and they do basically the chassis service and the pump service.
So, so we haven't made that's the five, uh, what is it, thirty, thirty three percent? Thirty three, no, just nine percent.
Nine. Yes. I didn't ask them because there's not many places around and every, I think it's because it's a shiny red truck, it's just. They're increasing their rates and I, I know as a mechanic, it's getting harder and harder to keep the technician around without operating. All benefits of the hospital.
And I said, I just ran thirty three percent.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, um. Um, memberships, so extended memberships, glad.
Still on eating fuel and the propane that decreased by twenty percent. And that's.
Oil pretty much at the beach fire station.
Okay.
They actually called me last time and I, we could only get a gallon in because of the heat pump down there.
Oh, the heat, oh, okay.
Yeah, there, there was two heat pumps down there and they. I think the only time I've been down there and they haven't been putting out heat is like twelve below.
Yeah.
Last. And so that's why we kept first there, it's just set up a little setting. If it gets below forty five, we'll kick off.
I guess that that was a good decision. Okay, perfect, that's all I've got on that.
Nope, those are definitely paying for themselves. Um, supplies, um, I, we needed a new laptop. For the fire department, so we went over budget. Uh, this year, but I don't, I don't plan on a lot of the extras for supplies this year, so. Just kind of increased it as what I was. Paper, a.
A new laptop, but you all set as far as I T equipment?
Yes.
In your.
In the station.
In the station itself, I mean, you've got your office, but then there's the, what are we gonna call it, a control room?
Dispatch room as well. Dispatch, where you guys, yeah, do the training every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the description.
Okay.
That all seems to be working sufficiently, I mean, we're not doing a whole lot with it, other than storing training stuff and other documents. That all, I mean, doesn't seem to be having any issues. I'm not a super computer savvy guy, but I know the reason we had to replace the laptop was because it completely went outdated. And I guess somebody hacked into it and removed all the software.
Nice.
So, no, uh, I don't, everybody seems to be satisfied on that being the computers there, don't have any issues.
It, it says in supplies, you also, the firefighting phone is in that line too?
That should, um, that should, right. That would be, you need the equipment purchases, right?
No, well, in the description, it said.
It is okay.
That number doesn't seem to.
No, it doesn't.
So it won't be phone, should have been.
Should, I, I.
That description may be a carryover from.
From the past, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, phone, in my opinion, would be in equipment purchases and that's where I added the money in for the increased price.
Okay, so if we add home back to that, there's no increase in, in dollar amount?
Good, no, cause I, I assumed that it was.
Okay.
Equipment purchases, but, uh.
Are, are we buying? Is it available, I read that article a little while ago in the paper about. The less banned phone.
Yes, we're buying. We're not, there is no such thing as P FAS pre foam from what I'm told from any of our distributors, but we're purchasing. Non-P FAS added foam, so. They can't tell me what that actually means.
The minimum standard.
Uh, yeah, so it's supposed to be the safest, it's supposedly the. Safest class A foam that we could buy right now.
Very quick thing, so the fires in Southern California, you know, so you see the airplanes flying and they drop all this red stuff out? That, this colored wire or what?
It's fire retardant that they add to the water.
Oh.
I have no idea what it is.
You don't use anything like?
We don't use anything like that, no.
It's a good idea, but so we don't have something out of the wind, sorry. What about homeowner, have there fly red stuff? Fires coming, is it different than spraying their house or you guys?
Probably not, I mean, they're not gonna have the meets to, cause they're, they're trying to cascade it over the treetops, cause that's where the fire is trapped. It's usually, the wind is trapped on the treetops and burnt down. Uh, so they're trying to drop it. Top surface of everything, that's retarded, but it's obviously getting to the ground as well, but. Yeah, I mean, there's all kinds of things that people are, we're trying to do out there.
Well, uh, another question on beach road in the last year or two, I know there was like a brush fire. You know, good into the fog and you guys been walking there? I think someone said that helicopters came, how do we pay for helicopters?
That's paid for by the state, so that's through Forest Service, so that was. That was, uh, Forest Bureau was bored that had anything to do, when I was speaking with them basically, and they go, the guys are ready, helicopter's running. Do you want it? We're like, no, I don't really think we need it. But we could send it and it could come and it could help you, and I'm like.
Yeah.
If you want to send it, just send it, and so that's, that's how that, I know that. If you guys want to send it, send it, we'll take all the extra help we can get right now. At that point, the fire was pretty well. It's one of those things, I think they have toys, you want a few minutes, and I have, in my opinion, it's also just another good training opportunity to go up. Where were we?
Telephone.
Telephone, internet, that's dictated by telephone company. Respiratory standard, that's all supposedly gonna stay the same.
What is that?
That's for, we have to do medical clearance paperwork for everybody that's an interior firefighter. Uh, every, every year we do medical valuation for every interior firefighter. And that information goes to health connections, they review it and they choose if they need to speak with that firefighter prior.
Is that enough? Okay, so we've got. We've got a fair amount, plus you get three new, you know, I mean, and they're probably not gonna be interior firefighters in the first year, but.
No, I don't think they will be for next year, but, um. I don't know, I don't think we've even been expending half of that.
Okay.
Every year, so even. With four, three or four more, I can see in the next year we may lose one.
Yeah.
Took aging out, um, so I, I don't know as if.
What's wrong with age?
Yes, where's the, but, as you know.
I'm a member of the aging world.
I don't force them out, I usually, they usually say it's time, it's time for me to be done. See, uh, hose and ladder testing. Fifty seven hundred was the quote that I received from a hose ladder testing company. Uh, emergency reporting, so. Emergency reporting is the company that we use now for, for reporting, uh, all of our fire calls to the state. As well as doing payroll and everything. Uh. They have been, NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency is, is rewriting some of the standards for all that. And company called E S O, which is another reporting software company, bought Emergency Reporter. And they are not going to be updating emergency reporting to be compliant with state or NFPA standards. So they're basically forcing us to go over to their new software and that's what it is.
Is that enough, Donnie?
So that's the quote they gave me, so hopefully they stick to it, I mean, it's, it's a quote that's in the email, um, and that was the quote for. Next year, not for this year. Snow removal is what Fireless is gonna do snow removal for. Care is gonna be longer, care does it, the security system. Uh, I'm not sure why the actual price went down.
The security system, we, I think we had, it was new, we had over budgeted, so.
Okay, no, we just didn't spend.
Yeah.
The insurance for firefighters. And the only other one was wastewater feedings, which Matt put in that in there and I agree well as. Uh. Those wastewater feeds plus, um. Waste treatment and stuff, that center station, I realized is, the subject's never pumped. I thought it really sees a lot of usage, but it's been.
No, but you gotta look at stuff.
Thirteen years, and I might as well, it's pretty inexpensive to have it pumped out versus. By the way, it's overflowing, it's water all over the place, problems are. So I figured we might as well have that pumped out this year.
There's also, it just says fees, the very last line.
That was from three years ago or two years ago.
So what was that, I forget.
That was our Department of Labor fees when I was putting in.
Yes, that was.
I didn't know where I wanted to put it in, so I. Pulled it out, so you could see that we had had to pay.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yep.
Cause I didn't wanna overplay one of what we did in previous years.
Where are we accounting for the engine replacement? That's a whole different file.
In our, yeah, in our capital improvement budget, which, through a program which we'll talk about about this time tomorrow night. But Don can talk about it, that we can, stuck in brief term, we have four primary firefighting vehicle.
Yep, we have been four apparatus.
Keep them thirty years on average?
Twenty seven years, we're trying to do them every seven years. The town honestly doesn't put enough money away to pay for an apparatus every seven years, there's a foundation that donates. Considerable amount. And I allocate, allocate that to a contingency fund, the beach station fund and truck fund. So. Very fortunate to not have to pay a whole lot for fire trucks and other, some other equipment as well.
What's a, what's a typical engine thoughts nowadays?
Lots, I was just gonna say, so the last engine we bought was six hundred and ninety thousand dollars and I just talked to. A rep for that truck and someone just ordered the exact same truck and it's a little over nine hundred thousand. And keep in mind, that's just an empty truck, that comes with a pump. Six wheels. So it doesn't come with a need of firefighting either. That'd be, I think you kept someone a total tally for him for last year that could have closed to sixty thousand dollars or more. We have five years till we need to replace.
So, Donnie, I don't see anything for expansion of, uh. Security system, do you need anything like that? Do you need any, do you wanna expand the camera system down there? Do you think we should? Should there be interior cameras? I mean, I, and this, I'm just throwing this out there.
Right, yeah, no, I, um. I'm not a huge fan of interior cameras unless we find that way, you know, I like it. They come and go as they please, whether they just wanna stop in. Grab a bottle of water, wash their truck, sweep the floor. I just, I want people to feel they're welcome. Whether they're actually there for fire reasons or. Or just in because I think people come here and go and. It's a good thing.
Yep, it is.
Uh, and I have, I've had no reason. To put anything inside, um, the cameras outside seem to catch everything.
I wait every time I go.
There's, there's the walk, reaches all the way up to Route fifty-two, so there's a lot of expectations.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, but it's good, no, it's very good. No, no, I'm happy with that, that's so far since we've worked great.
Just, just a question, you know, I didn't see anything there for that, for future expansion, just wondering, that's all.
Any other questions for Fire Department, cause we're.
Yeah.
Running behind now off scale, but that's okay. I'll talk quick on the next step. If there aren't any, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you to all, appreciate it.
Yeah. Uh, next will be protection other, which is page nine. Uh, protection other are things associated with the. Protection that don't fall neatly under some other category. Uh, streetlights, uh, we lease a half a dozen streetlights in Central Main Power. And we, the town, own sidewalk lights at the beach. Uh, so both the lease payments are in that as well as the electrical. Uh, and basic charge for the sidewalk lights at the beach. Insurances, uh, we're required to have workers' compensation insurance, unemployment insurance. Uh, the town participates in the main municipal association risk pool. And we budget a, we have a thousand dollar deductible, we budget for one incident, not knowing how many we're actually going to have. Uh, legal services, uh, this is for our town attorney and or conflict counsel. We hire conflict counsel if the town attorney is advising like the. Code enforcement officer and there's an appeal. Town attorney can advise the code officer and the Board of Appeals on something. So we hire an outside entity to assist them. Uh, that is. You know, I guess as good as mine, how, some of that we can predict and some of it, we just don't know who's gonna. File suit or be distraught by some decision the town makes. Uh, emergency management, we only budget for supplies there now, uh, we. Uh, the public facilities director is taking on the role of the emergency management director as well. Uh, ambulance, I touched on earlier, uh, that has proposed to be up seventy-eight point three percent. It's a work in progress to say the least. Um, like. Like to, next time, come back, tell you it's gonna be a lot less, but we'll see. Uh, Knox Dispatch, uh, we contract with Knox that were. Our EMS is, is, because it's based in Rockport, is dispatched from Knox. Um, and that's what we're gonna pay County of Knox Dispatch for, so the company here. And parking enforcement is just supplies, tickets, warning cards, whatnot. You don't purchase any. Glenn's got a question.
And, yeah, uh, does the state pay for the, the troopers entirely, or do we have to? Didn't cover any of their risks?
The state pays for, uh, the state police coverage, what limited we might receive. Uh, we pay yearly for, uh, Waldo County Services and Waldo County Sheriff's Office. Not part of the budget because Waldo County tells us what the taxes are gonna be and we. Add it to your bill.
How are the streetlights working down at the beach, the sidewalk? So far to the business.
As far as on the weather, they're working fine. They continue to work and, yeah.
Good. They look nice.
Uh, they're improvement over the originals.
Yeah.
Any other questions on protection other, I know I'm breathing too this quick, but we've. Been closer to being back on schedule. Uh, page ten is town office building, that's the building that you're obviously in, it's the town office, we have a custodian that, uh. Uh, cleans in the building, uh, we pay that person wage. Uh, we do track removal from here, mowing or landscaping. Uh, we have a security system in the building, not only for intrusion but for smoke, uh, water in the basement. Uh, heat, CO2, yeah, you name it, we've got it. Uh, building maintenance is, uh, our various heating and cooling systems, water, wastewater, flooring, fire extinguishers. That's covered there, electricity is our basic charge for the meter. Uh, equipment purchases, anything we need to purchase for maintenance of the building, a vacuum, a shovel, a broom, a hose. Name it. Uh, heating fuel, we have propane heat here in the. In the town office, the addition of the new part of the building has heat pumps. Uh, with radiant floor heat that's heated by propane if we need it. Most of the time it's not on unless it gets really cold outside. What I would call the old part of the building still has a hot air furnace, we use propane for that. Heat. Um, as well as we have an emergency generator here at the town office. Uh, supplies is just general cleaning, cleaning supplies, trash bags, paper products. Telephone, we have five phone lines and one fax line. And long distance charges, uh, website, internet, uh, town has a website that gets charged here and internet. Expenses. Uh, and website hosting, and then snow removal, we have a contract for plowing up front as well as shoveling. Walkways, uh, front door, back door, over to the post office, round the generator and the heat pumps. And the way I talk quickly. Anybody have any questions, we're talking that budget going up three point eight percent coming here. What's that?
Same contractor does several.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we bid that out, uh, two years ago, uh, as a package, so we only have to manage one contractor for snow removal. Uh, with the exception of the fish pier that we have. Uh, page eleven is contingency. Uh, contingency is just that, it's for. Items that we are unaware of, uh, the slot court obviously can, uh. Call a special town meeting to appropriate monies. Uh, contingency basically avoid that, we budgeted ten thousand dollars. For a long time, I think it was ten thousand dollars when I came here twenty-one years ago, to be honest with you. Might had a dip to eight thousand somewhere along the line, uh, we've included like, what in the last. Eight years or so expenses of what we've expended just so you have a little history. Uh, you'll note that FY twenty, uh, was a little over nine thousand dollars. It was for. Costs associated with the pandemic. Primarily.
So you've been saving, uh, unused contingency funds for years?
No, any, any funds that, uh. Town meeting doesn't vote to carry forward. Goes in laps, what's called our unassigned fund balance. Um, on, late tomorrow night when we do revenues and offsets.
Yeah.
We take money out of unassigned fund balance. To reduce the property tax burden, so that's a very good question, John. Under administration and finance, I don't know what we're holding the budget for this year, but. And, you know, I'll, I'll look at, now, fire club, it's not a good example. Um. Administration and finance is, like, you have bank for that page. Six hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. If we only spend five hundred fifty dollars, or five hundred fifty thousand. The remainder of that in less town meeting votes, otherwise we roll it down assigned fund balance. And the will, we traditionally and annually appropriate something. To reduce that, there are few exceptions. Um, fire departments, anything that they don't expend out of fire department goes into the truck fund. Harbor, anything that doesn't get spent out of the harbor goes into the harbor savings. And that, that was voted on by town meeting long ago and. It continues and forwards until town meeting changes that provision. And I think, you know, for the. For particularly, uh, for the truck fund, I mean. I think it was a motivator, not that people go needlessly spend money. But you don't wanna go have stacks of paper. You know, in the fire department closets that don't get used so they can spend their money. There was a little reward if the money didn't get spent, it would go towards. A future purchase of a truck. I suspect that was launched a long ago. Uh, page twelve as code enforcement officer. On it, we employ a part-time code enforcement officer. Uh, his wage is paid out of here. Uh, along with professional development for training, membership money, supplies and publications, equipment purchases. And some money for water monitoring if so needed. Have any questions about code, I know I went really quick.
Four point five percent change in wage, David?
Yep, uh, two and a half percent for the cola and roughly two percent for the fifty-third pay week.
Okay.
Did everybody see what? Select person late asked about the wages on that code officer. It looks like a percent change requested is for, it doesn't look, it's written right there, four and a half percent. Two and a half percent against the cola and then roughly two percent for the fifty-third thing. There may be some rounding in that. Hmm, no other question on code officer, I'm gonna turn the page over to assessing, we can finish thirteen. Our current assessor's agent is, uh. Retiring, resigning, not gonna be in our employee anymore after June thirty. Uh, we are in the process of, like I said earlier, the revaluation. Um, we are. We've received a proposal from the revaluation company to continue on as the director of the agent for us in the coming year. Uh, so we currently carry that, that hasn't gone to the board of select board for consideration, we carry the cost. Slight, slight reduction. Uh, RJD appraisals. Other questions? No. Hey, so. Look at that, seven fifteen. Or at seven twenty. Uh, joining us now is Matt Dean. Matt is our public facilities director. Uh, is part of public facility, uh, he works closely with the town administrator slash road commissioner. And highways and bridges, also does a lot of work as the Deppen Harbor master. Uh, with the harbor, which we're gonna talk about shortly there, shortly here, so he's not gonna go far. I am. Been a welcome addition for the last, what? Fifteen months?
Yeah.
Give it a take. Uh, don't pick on him too hard, but we'll. See if we can pick on him. Um, I'll talk very briefly and then I'll turn it over to Matt. Uh, wages, uh, we do hire some part-time personnel for. Sign installations and flagging and general labor, sweeping and patching, et cetera. Uh, we pay them an hourly wage, we're trying to, uh, wean ourselves of. Having part-time employees and do it more contractual. Employees carry with it certain responsibilities and liabilities, uh, but. We haven't quite got to zero yet. Again. Um, I think I'll have Matt talk to you a little bit about the, what we anticipate for a program for the coming year. And the breakdowns ahead of you, and you're on.
I'm on. It's, uh, Star machinery. Good place, very place to start. Uh, so the road grader, we do fall and spring grading of all gravel roads, most of the gravel road. Uh. Shoulder box and broom is for our, our paving projects. Which we'll get to in a minute, we've chosen a few roads.
These, these accounts are for rental or maintenance or?
These are all private contractors that we hire to do the work for, for these.
The town owns no rolling equipment in public facilities or public. And so everything. Here under machinery and materials, um, and all the work. Uh, for paving and winter maintenance, we contract out.
Uh, what were we on third of, so the Harley rig. That's for our smaller repairs throughout the year versus having a road grader come through and grade the whole roads. Uh, mulchers, that's when we do all of our ditching or replace culverts, we'll, of course, seed and hay. Uh, trucking, that's mainly for getting equipment around, but also. We truck in gravel next door and stockpile, so that covers that, that expense. Uh, the excavator for the culverts and ditching. Uh, roadside mowing, that is, that is tractor work for grass. The patch truck is, uh, patching cracks in pavement. Uh, tree brush and terminal removal is, um, if, if anybody saw Greenacre Road. Slab City or High Street this fall. It's something, uh. We hire a machine to actually go through. Do the trees versus. Yeah, it's dangerous, yeah. Yeah, it's dangerous, but a lot more efficient than say a group of people with saws and chippers. And cover a lot more ground. Um.
Can I just ask a question about that?
Yep.
Because. Um, I know we had an issue with flooding on our property from. The crap from that big piece of equipment because. Our ditches weren't also like cleaned out.
Yeah.
And, um. I worry about what it does to the road, cause I know, you know, we've had two different things. In front of our house in the last year on High Street where, you know, we had. A lot of precipitation in a short time that created flooding that then undercut the edge of the road and then the. Town has to come and fix the road, replace the culverts. Um, should we consider? Including in, in that tree and brush trimming and removal, well, the removal piece, I guess, is the question. You know, we just kind of, was that sort of mist? Right around our house, cause you tend to notice what's closest to you, I didn't notice if it was happening elsewhere, but I know we've had. Flooding on other roads and erosion.
One thing with the tree cutting and the ditching is we will never be ahead with that. By the time we get caught on one road, there's another road. Trees are all on the road, the leaves come down in the fall. We learned a lot this year with the, the machine mulching. But, um.
We also utilize. Two different types of equipment this year. And each one leaves a different. Residue behind. And I think we are on a. Bit of, we, I'll admit, we're on a bit of a learning curve, and I think each one has their appropriate location. Um, and we may be a little more selective about what we do where with which piece of equipment. Um, the. Greenacre Road. Ended up with it. I'll call it a finer work product. The chips were smaller, roads. Different, um, the High Street ended up with a little bigger. Chips and caused some.
Limbs.
Yeah. Which got, which.
Then totally blocked the culvert, which, right.
And Greenacre Road Slab City with a different machine, didn't have a single problem.
Okay.
Yep, so that was our learning curve on that, unfortunately, it was in front of your house.
That's okay, I cleaned it out.
So, yeah, so we're gonna plan on doing more of that, cause we'll. That's a constant, uh, struggle to stay ahead of trees. Uh, so. The beach parking lot, we sweep that sometimes two or three times a year, depending on the storm and how much debris has landed in the parking lot. And then, of course, uh, touching up crosswalks, parking spaces. Lines throughout town is the last one there. We stockpile gravel, stone. Next door. So, uh, well, especially roads get posted. We don't have to rely on gravel pits that are someplace we can't. So uh well, especially if roads get posted, we don't have to rely on gravel pits that are someplace we can't access. As well as culverts, we we have a stockpile there. Um see, guard grab, sorry.
What's stone, very good gravel?
Gravel is more of like what you drive on like a gravel road, like inch minus gravel. Yeah, and then we we have stone for when we put new culverts in. We we do the end of the culvert, larger stone, okay, that way it won't, the sediment will fill in or. Yep, and then some of our steeper ditches like Moody Mountain Road, High Street. When we ditch those, we'll line the ditch with larger stones. What's that? Has it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just so you know, John Stone is uniform in size. I mean, you may, you may, I mean, there's some variation, obviously. But gravel is a well-grated material, so you have some silts in it, some finds in it. And some stone in it, some sand in it, so that locks better.
Yeah.
Um for use for vehicular traffic.
Is the stone sharpish or around your?
We we usually buy crushed. That's bigger stone. But if you think about it, if someone told you they were gonna bring you three-quarter inch stone, you would anticipate that almost everything that comes is about three-quarters. It has a maximum size of about three-quarters of an inch. You're not gonna get sand. If you buy gravel, you're gonna have three-quarter inch stone in it, but you're also gonna have some sand in it so that it fills more of the voids.
Um and then the last, I guess, is the erosion control. We buy hay, straw, stockpile it next door. Then every once in a while, we'll have to buy a juke mat if it's a steeper area. Banking, things like that.
Keep going, you're doing a great job.
Okay. So storm expenses, that's. As you probably saw last year, a lot of engineering involved throughout town, um. It's supplies, unexpected supplies. The trash removal in the parks. Is what we have mainly down at the pier in the, in Lincolnville Beach. Salt sand shed. We occasionally have to pre-cha wash and retard the concrete in there to keep the salt from deteriorating in the building. And then, of course, potential leak in the roof.
How how's the building fare after the repair? We, the back wall, is that, that okay? Uh as well as expected?
Seems fine.
Once we don't push stand up against it, we'll be fine and there. Never occurred, yep.
Yeah. I see the integrity of the building is there for sure.
Yep.
Yes. Yep.
Direct removal parts, uh we have to add, you know, an outside part.
We don't do trash. Carry in, carry out. It's worked so far. Pretty much.
Uh electricity, it's pretty cut and dry for the sand salt shed. Um the next one is for any signs we need barricades, cones that go missing. Uh where we have paving, so we've chosen uh three roads that we'd like to do that. Are our worst three roads in our opinion as far as the condition of the pavement. Moody Mountain Road from two thirty-five to Martin Corner. The paved section of Townhouse Road.
You got South Gobtown, but that.
So two roads. And then the rest is our our plow contract with Harleys. With the coal increase for the year. Any questions?
Well, there goes a million dollars. Literally, million two, literally.
Yes.
How much of a contingency is that the miscellaneous storm expenses? Because we're budgeting ten thousand in like, we're only spending around five hundred or one thousand maybe?
Well.
Think we ended up taking a lot of the storm expenses, two things. And charging it under machinery this year, could be hired machinery to assist us. The other is we were we're recouping a lot of it. Fortunately, we're recouping a lot of that money from FEMA.
Okay.
So. But there will be storms that we have that we don't plan that, that pushing won't be there for us. Other questions on Public Works Highways and Bridges? Being done, I'm gonna turn the page, page fifteen. Put the recommendations here and we're early. Uh Public Works, Public Works Transfer Station. Um on page fifteen, town is part of the Midco Solid Waste Corporation. Uh we have an interlocal agreement with the towns of Camden and Rockport in hopes for that facility. Uh that is governed by a board of directors, which includes two members of the select board from each of the four communities. I guess you can be, you don't have to be a select board member, but most of them are.
You don't have to.
They're encouraged to be.
You're encouraged.
Uh once that budget's set, we get an assessment and this year's assessment's ninety-five thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars.
And that actually represents level funding of that for the last several years. We've been up a teeny bit just because it's a portion to the four towns based on tax assessments.
Yeah, if you look back to FY twenty-four, two years ago, we were actually a little bit lower than two years ago. Uh the philosophy at one point at Midco Solid Waste um had been. The yellow bag fee, the per ton charge, uh takes care of the yellow bag. And this assessment takes care of, uh I'm gonna call them the sins of the past. Um previous uh people chose to put waste in quarries. Which we have to pump the water out to go to Camden Wastewater Treatment Plant and create for that to go. And other mistakes or things that didn't seem right to have the current users pay for, but so it's spread out on your property taxes. Whether or not that's still the same philosophy, I don't know.
We're all in this together.
We are.
It's in the process of getting sunsetted. Capped, what, fifteen years?
Seven to, so it it's a, it's a seven to fifteen year closure. This is planned.
And we're required to have money to maintain. There's going to be expense related to. Maintaining that once it's closed to make sure nothing's reaching out into groundwater and stuff. And as Dave, when he was talking about how the towns are, we're all putting money into this fund. That's going to maintain it safely after it's closed.
Will that still be a recycling?
That is, that is the plan. We're working on a redevelopment plan uh that will come into play close to. Closure, um that'll will keep the Midco Solid Waste moving. Keep, you know, there'll be garbage in and garbage out, that type of thing. Um it it will, you'll always be able to move your waste along.
Landfill stuff, once the landfill is calmed and what's gonna happen?
A lot of grass.
No, you mean what's gonna happen with the.
They'll haul it away like like Warren and Rockland did. Everything will be in containers and all somewhere else. The next whole ground.
Yeah.
One of the projects they're looking at is um, what's the word I'm looking for? Reusing of demolition material. You know, being able to divert more of it out of a waste stream and put it back to use.
Send it to the high school. They got that program, right?
Well, we've had the high school working on that, but we're now, we've identified that there could potentially be a fair amount of money. In keeping these items out of the, out of the landfill and actually marketing.
Yeah.
So we're working on that. But we wanna do it right.
You can tell we're the two that are.
John, John, in answer to your question, I haven't seen the most recent estimates for how long the landfill is estimated to last. But I arrived in Lincolnville in twenty-two thousand three. And the estimate on the commercial of the demolition debris landfill was seven years. The last time I looked, which has been a couple of years, the estimate was six or seven years.
It's a familiar number.
But the, I mean, the pile has come up a long ways, but believe it or not, that's floating. In water in that quarry, and the more you put on, the more compressed it is when we pump the water out. And so you gain airspace and you keep filling. But eventually, it's gonna bottom out and it's gonna, the voids will be gone and that'll be capped over.
Probably bottom out in seven years.
Seven to twenty.
Maybe.
Maybe.
All right, uh any other questions regarding Midco Solid Waste and Transfer Station budget? Day nine, we'll flip the page to page sixteen and talk about Public Works Harbor.
Want me to go?
Uh sure, you're doing such a good job and I'm tired of talking.
Okay, so uh pier winches, we have two winches down there, two electric motors that run hydraulic pumps. On the davits, uh this is just for replacement parts for those. And then we've got our actual pier maintenance, uh contracted labor would be Mike Alley. To replace a, a uh motor. Or sometimes we need repaired welding repairs to the davits or the inclines.
Set floats or.
That's a couple down, yeah.
You're doing a good job.
Materials, we replace the deck boards. Uh occasionally, and the screws to do those, those boards are expensive. Uh town guest and float mooring items. That is uh like, like Dave was saying, that's our power. They help us out with the anchors for the floating docks. We remove those. A few of them in the winter, and also we know we have a bad storm coming, we'll, we'll move the floats around to save those. Electric board repairs, mainly the spotlights, the floodlights, sometimes the power of the camera. Um we've got a little bit in there for storm damage again. Snow removal, that's for Mike to go down and plow and put salt down. We have three guest moorings town owned, the seven hundred fifty dollars is to cover the annual inspection for those. And then the last item there is the harbor camera, the wifi for that. Uh you can see the electricity is just a charge for for having power down there. The memberships and training is. One or both of us goes to main maritime once a year for our harbor master certifications. The wave break survey is required. We have to do that as annual, right?
Yeah.
Annual.
A number of years ago, the town uh relocated some stone that was from the old ferry slip to act as a wave break. Um part of our permitting requires us to annually have a survey done of the beach. Both north and south are there to see if there's any erosion or accretion that can be assigned to that. We've never been able to identify anything discernible from that. Um but we require to monitor it. It does, the beach does move. It really moves based on storm action. You go down after a certain storm, there's a lot less of it. You go after down and after the next storm, there's a lot more of it and it's all wind and waves and water moving in.
This, I don't, but I did it right last year. The cannon got swept away or what?
It's been refurbished.
Okay.
Yep, oh yeah.
Gone.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's coming back.
Uh so the annual pier inspection is for an engineer to go down, inspect our pilings, make sure the pier is safe to drive on, used. And then the last thing is, we put a dumpster on the pier, the winter months.
Yeah, it's a winter, we put the dumpster.
November through April, something like that. Half the year, there's a dumpster, the other half of the year, the summer, there's a trash can. That's the coverage that's.
So I have a question about the annual pier inspection, cause that also looks like it was only. We paid six hundred and twenty-five dollars last year and we haven't paid anything this year. Is this another one where we just haven't been billed in really long?
No, it's not, it's not a, it's not a, the reason we haven't paid any this year is because it's the, an expense we usually do in the spring. So we haven't incurred the expense as yet. Um and I'm not quite sure I can speak accurately about the six twenty-five from two years ago, but.
But we do expect to spend twenty-five hundred this year.
Expect to, hopefully we'll be able to do more of an under inspection this year. Sometimes it's just been based on what you can see without doing. Oh, no, no, we don't have to do any diving, cause you can get down in the low water and see pretty well. Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
I will. Uh but we need to do more on pilings than we previously.
Stone, stone damage avoidance and repairs, thirty-five hundred. Is, is that, that enough? I hear you know.
How many storms are we gonna get?
Well, yeah, last year, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're trying to make our existing facilities more resilient. Uh if you went down this year, well, last, a year ago, January, we, that pier took a beating. In the two January storms on the tenth and the thirteenth. Um we, as bad as the storm was. And the damage incurred, we've been fortunate to be able to recoup. Um repairs, replacement and some resilience money to make things a little more. Not permanent, but well, a little better protected, shall we say. We have, um for example, the uh, the hydraulic pump and the motors for those. Used to be in wooden boxes, now they're in diamond plate boxes that are elevated compared to being just on the deck. Uh that type of thing, and we're just trying to pick away at, as things become obvious to us. Resilience to make it more resilient.
Thank you.
We could always spend more. And just at the bottom of that, just listed general work plan for the summer, but a lot of it's dictated to it. By what breaks, when it breaks, we pick that.
Um I don't see, and maybe this is looped in with the. Stuff for the town office here, but didn't you need some software or didn't you get some software for our mooring placement and? And and taking care of tracking all of that? So that's all that I, I don't see anything in here for that. And is that a renewable thing or it's?
Obviously, it's a, what, what's the percentage?
It's one percent of our.
Okay.
Harbor income for the year.
Oh, that's right, okay. We talked about that.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But so where are we paying for that?
General maintenance.
Oh, ten, thanks.
I think it's a hundred and ninety dollars a year.
Yeah.
For the whole year.
Perfect. Any other harbor related question? No, oh good. I'm not quite sure, but we'll flip the page and go to page seventeen, which has Public Works Other. Um I think we'll, we'll make the three newest members of any committee. That have joined us. Page, page seventeen, um. Josh Beveridge, pre-rotator, Bergen. Are members of our rec- recently appointed members or to the Recreation Commission. Uh Josh uh went to his first meeting and got elected to be chair. to the recreation commission, uh, Josh, uh, went to his first meeting and got elected to be chair, so he's in charge.
We didn't, we didn't warn you, did we?
So we're not gonna, uh, throw them completely under the bus, uh, recreation commission, um, has traditionally been, uh, overseeing our athletic fields, the ball fields and the tennis court behind the school as well as Breeze Mare Park. Um, and those are intermingled here under public works other. Uh, Matt's been working diligently as public facilities director. Um, while we had a little bit of a lull with the recreation commission, but they're rejuvenated. With new smooths and new people, new blood, um, and probably I'm gonna throw this a little bit to Matt to talk about. Um, Breeze Mare Park maintenance, athletic fields. And then, um, the three members of the recreation commission can chime in at any time and they'll learn so they can be thrown under the bus diligently next year.
You want me to go over down the order or go from Breeze Mare?
Why don't you do Breeze Mare Athletic Field so that, um,
Okay.
And then if they wanna go home and do other things, they can, if they wanna stay all night, they can do that as well.
Okay, so we'll start with Breeze Mare. Uh, the mowing, that's, this is three percent higher than what we paid this current year. The mowing bids are due tomorrow at ten o'clock in the morning. So we'll have a rough idea of what our bids are anyway, so the select board decides.
Matt, is there a guy that moved previously?
Good. Yes, yep. So I just base, base it off the current contract, three percent more. And that's how we get the forty-five hundred.
And mowing wasn't part of the budget last year.
For Breeze Mare, right, or the athletic fields, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was put on us, oh, halfway through the year, I guess. Uh, emergency dock removal for Breeze Mare. Uh, we have an agreement with the local business to pull that if need be in a storm. Porta potties, uh, that's a three percent increase from last year. General maintenance for the park, we did increase that, uh, two hundred dollars. For things like the picnic tables, the bandstand, any maintenance we need. Uh, this is our, our winter and fall float launching retrieval. It stayed the same. Uh, the rec commission wanted to purchase a few new swim buoys, the actual ones that mark the swim area, we put out and have a life ring for down in Breeze Mare. So I put those in the request.
Don't jump ahead until anybody, anybody had any questions or you all wanna jump in and throw any more?
No, actually, uh, Leslie's the one that requested those two, so, and she's not here, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll jump.
To replace what's there or in addition to?
Two new swim buoys currently do not have a life ring down there, so they brought it up, I said, I think it's a great idea.
Do the new swim buoys replace what's there or is it in addition to?
No, these are replacements.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
Perfect.
Yes, yep, right, right there at the.
Yeah.
At the boat launch.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
No, I'm sorry about that.
No, you're good. So athletic fields, same, this is a three percent increase. Last year, we did not have this on there because we took it over after. The, the, uh, airing fertilize, we control. This is through sports fields, it's a company that does it every year. Uh, the fence repair is quite a bit less than last year, this is just in case a gate is damaged or says pulls a vehicle up and and, uh.
Did the backstop get leveled?
Yes.
Last year, perfect.
Yep.
So that's why the thirty-five percent less?
We went from fifteen thousand budgeted last year to we actually, I had the repairs done in the fall. So all the repairs that you guys talked about last year are done, this, this is just in case.
Yep.
You say, uh, maybe a gate.
There's always gonna be, there's always gonna be movement, okay.
Yep.
Perfect, that's great, man.
Um, let's see here. Regravel the, of course, the parking area down there, re-spraying after we open the gate back up. Porta potty rental went up three percent. Um, I don't wanna steal their thunder.
Yeah, cool.
You guys wanna pick it up from paint green monster now?
So, uh, in, in past, I think it was twenty twenty-two, they brought replacing and repainting the green monster, replacing, fixing, um, that's been tabled, we're resurrecting that and hopefully we're trying to do that before the little league season this year. Uh, through community efforts to try and play like that thing, which not just because we'd want to, but because it's been sitting on the dock for so long, we like better for the community and everything, so that's hopefully first and foremost, one of the things to spring. Uh, we have.
Which, all the stuff got donated by Adam Lambert.
So the materials have been already gifted, we just have to retrieve such. So it's no expense.
That's great, yeah.
And we're hoping through the community efforts, we can get it done, in a timely fashion.
A thousand boxes just for extras in case we need something that again, doesn't get donated, you know, more paint, stuff like that.
Um, the other goal is the upper dugouts closest to the school need to be removed. They're probably five years past due.
Yeah.
Um, so that's first and foremost and not knowing what we may incur, there's a little bit of leeway in the, the repairs, but we have, they've gifted materials for that as well. And and over give or try to figure out, that may bite into the origin for the green monster, um, thousand dollars, if it's not used yet.
That's great. It would be good to get that finished up.
The repair, the infield, the little league is the infield is all sunk in. Needs to be either peeled back, re-level and set again, or is just redone completely.
Is that a sports field thing?
Uh, what?
You're, you're talking what pitcher mound out?
Just the, yeah, just the infield inside the bases.
Yeah.
From the pitcher mound out on the little league field.
Yeah.
Is all sunk in and it's not the way it should be at all.
Maybe we should look at that. A drain, a drainage problem.
Okay.
We, and I don't wanna say this, but I will, I wonder if we created, we couldn't have created a problem by putting that.
No, cause it's been going on quite a while.
Okay.
And I don't know who originally did the sports fields, that sports, uh, the one up here for.
No, they didn't construct the field.
They didn't construct the field, okay.
No, it was volunteers, recognition.
So I think it's just years of.
Yeah.
Saddling, you know, it just, it needs to be redone though.
But on top there, on the backstops, then behind the dugout, this is also eroded, then you can actually see the drain tile, so. Making that.
Okay, so there's no, there's no request for money for any of that type of thing, uh.
We don't really know what may, or may not.
Okay, well, we have where the athletic fields are repaired, infield was fifteen hundred bucks, we were gonna see if like Todd could do it for us or. So I don't know. Yeah. That's a tough one, cause.
Right.
I don't know who does that stuff or what we're gonna run into.
Yeah, they're probably not, the other thing is that the proximity of that field is utilized more by the school, by the kids. Cause the proximity to the playgrounds, it run around a lot, so. They're gonna keep seeing more degradation and due to that, just general wear and tear.
Well, I can correct me if I'm wrong, David, but did we have sports field do some of that type of work when we first started taking that over? Pitcher's mound and all of that, we have.
Well, they certainly do, they certainly do the pitcher's mound and the base paths, but what Karen was talking about, just it's fine.
Need all.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like from the edge of the pitcher's mound to the third base line, it, it's just, it's long.
And that's what I was looking at with the twenty-five thousand with the infield prep and stuff, I was like, well, does that include that, but it, it's just the baseline, you know, pitcher's mound and base.
Yeah, pitcher's line, base. Pitcher's mound, baseline, level of the bases, you know, that type of thing, that's.
The first set of lines.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Yeah.
And like we were saying, it could be as easy as Todd coming in, putting loam in there and then seeding over that, I don't know if we necessarily have to peel back all that saw, if we could, but we need somebody to look at it and tell us what we're getting in the.
Um, there's a lot of money in this year's budget that hasn't been expended yet. Are some of these things that we're talking about, things you're already planning to do with this year's money?
Most of what, most of what remains this year, uh, for monies, um, fencing came less expensive than we had in budgeted or anticipated last year, so there's gonna be a I won't say a surplus, but there will be some of that left over. Uh, we still are gonna put the poly cap around the top of the fence that we didn't bother to put on before the fence was re-levelled. Makes sense. Uh, the other is there are a number of things that sports fields will do in the spring to get the fields ready, and that's crazy.
And we may, you may end up getting a, a sound recommendation from them.
Right.
As well.
Exactly.
Yeah. That's, that's when David said some of this money is actually spent already, even though it hasn't been expended and.
Right.
You know, cause, you know, that goes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And we're new to it too, so we'll figure that out as we go.
Okay, that sounds good.
Moving on? Good, so back to Lakeville Beach. Maintenance.
You're, you're welcome to stay. But you're also.
Please stay.
There you go.
We got people here, yeah.
We'll see you through for a little while.
All right.
So the porta potties, once again, three percent increase. Uh, beach cleaning, same. Uh, the spring storm cleanup. That's for our major storms, we end up having trees, trash, debris all over the beach, the road down there. Um, and then, but the beach cleaner supplies, that's basically just the trash bags and items. Or cleaning up down there.
You don't have to do better in fact, cause we're gonna do that tomorrow.
Okay. You wanna talk about the septic?
Sure, uh, towns required by state statute to have either a licensed septic disposal facility or a contract with somebody that has a license. For septic, in case you don't know, it's the stuff they pump out in the septic tanks. Um, we choose to contract with interstate septic to accept that. Uh, they, they basically guarantee that if you call up and say I've got a thousand gallon, they'll have a place to take it. Um, towns are required to have such a facility, and I can guarantee you that we couldn't have our own field and operate it for this much money. Nor that we want the headache, uh, let's see. You wanna talk about duck trap and put up Scott Park?
Sure.
And I'll talk about solar.
Okay, so duck trap, once again, is a porta potty down there during the summer months. Uh, I don't know why there's no total over here, but up top there is. Thousand bucks.
Yeah.
So. Then drop Scott Park, we have one porta potty over there, um, our landscaping services, that's, that's the mowing, that's three percent over last year, not knowing what tomorrow will bring with bids. Um, little bit of money in case we need to repair any signs down there, anything from dog, no dogs on the beach or dogs on leashes, things like that. And then we have a little bit of money for maintenance and repairs of the infrastructure down there. The picnic tables, the grills, the gate, gate.
How did that work out last year, the, as far as the, you lug it in, you lug it out? Cause we don't have any track, that worked out good.
Yeah.
Now we, I, and I'm embarrassed to say I haven't been down there since I looked at all of the the, um, lead tubes there that got repaired and everything, is everything good there?
Yes.
Cause we had them reshingled and reposted, all of that, you're, you're, you're good with all of that.
They're in great shape, but we put a little bit of money in to maintain them, but.
Yeah.
But.
That's great.
Yeah, we're, we're looking pretty good down there.
The biggest challenge we have there at the moment is the erosion of the bank.
Yeah.
That occurred in the winter storms of last year, um, we're working our magic with the Maren hopes that we might be able to take on a project down there. Um, that they might fund and till then, it's good. We have, you have stairs, stairs got replaced, access to the beach, but the banking itself looks like a
So something that needs some attention in the, in the future.
The banking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Definitely, okay.
And of course, at some point, that building, that bathroom facility that we don't use, you know, that's just a building, it's just sitting there aging.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to make a decision on that at some point. But for right now, it's, it's watertight, I check it, nobody's living in it, uh, yeah. You know, it's. You know, it's.
Perfect. Great, that's good.
Yep.
Uh, the lesson, we had some more questions on put up Scott Park, the last item we have under public works other is our solar array. Uh, we contract with revision on their bronze level service plan to come check it and do whatever testing they do to make sure it's functioning. Uh, and they also renew, they also manage our renewable energy certificates. Uh, which is money that comes to the town, they charge us a fee to broker those and we get a couple thousand bucks.
Couple thousand? Every day, every year?
Of income in addition to the free electricity we get, so.
So the two thousand days for the, the C was a two thousand?
Yeah, it's pretty much, it's pretty much a wash in the big, in the big scheme of things.
For maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, John was part of that committee and, uh, to help us get that and as far as seems to be paying off for us.
I, can I, can we go back to the athletic fields for just?
Sure.
Yeah. Um, so probably two years ago, we put in some benches. Was it two years ago?
No.
For the soccer, you mean?
Last year.
Last, okay, so it was last year. Do they need two more? I know we, we did what we could.
Yep.
For the first year and everything, and we worked out a, a plan on, what do we, what are we doing, turning bleachers around when it's soccer season or whatever, so we're good there, but do we have enough benches for team?
We purchased, so the committee that was put together and you were on it.
Yeah.
With the rec commission and I found your old notes and Kay and I purchased what you guys recommended.
Dribblings.
I, I think it was fifty feet of benches.
Yeah, there.
Fifty feet of benches.
Okay.
So if any of it are needed, then maybe that should go to the school.
Right, I can't answer your question, I don't know if it's adequate or not, we purchased what was recommended.
Yep, okay.
We're down there all season for baseball.
And it's enough, you think it's plumbing?
Okay, good, all right, we're good.
Okay.
A lot of people are bringing in chairs.
Yep. Perfect, um, so this, this conversation brings me to the building that faces the the, um, soccer field, the doors, last time I saw that, the doors were falling off it, they weren't walkable.
They are in rough shape, and I think we, because we were new, we were like, all right, let's get the green monster done, let's get the two dugouts looking good, but that's definitely stuff that could be.
Well, uh, the reason I bring that up is the school locked their stuff in there and I hate to put anything on the back burner, but that should, or maybe come back with a number to fix that.
Maybe we ought to consider re-appropriating some of the fence money that we have in the current year's budget.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, cause they got a garage door and the other one, that's all in great shape, we looked at that the other day.
I know, maybe we put a garage door on what you're talking.
I know. Instead of putting in, yeah.
Well, just a thought, this happened, we started talking about that, I got thinking of, wow, last time I was there, that those two doors were.
Yeah, they're all rusted.
And did that.
One last thing that Matt had heard about, especially when the springtime comes, go around all of these facilities and make one year, two year, three year plan and say, can we pull off for this?
Yeah.
Really bad. Then that would give us a better baseline, knowing that we'll have, hopefully these two projects done.
That'd be good.
Yeah, yeah, we could probably do the garage, or fix those doors before.
Yeah.
Like this spring.
Whatever, however you do it, I'm just thinking, I didn't see it on the list here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and there.
Yeah, that's good.
You wait till, you wait till next year, Kern, you'll lose.
Okay, buddy. Thank you, sorry, definitely. Anyone have any other questions about Public Works Other? If not, believe it or not, we went through. We got a little bit off schedule, but we got back on schedule and we concluded what we were hoping to conclude tonight. Uh, and you have the list for Thursday, we're gonna have a few more guests, speakers, rather than me talking all night on Thursday. And there's nothing else, I guess we can all. I would entertain a motion, a final motion here.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Oh, one, one more thing, we have.
No.
No, sorry, just because I'm remoting in, we have to do it by roll call.
Oh, that's right.
Had to be a stickler, sorry, Kern.
Chair done.
Yes.
Feel, yes. Steve, yes. Robin.
Yes.
All right, yeah. We have, good night.